So, thank you, thank you, and welcome to Chesapeake High School. I'm here with students from a variety of the Baltimore County Public Schools high schools, and this is our first Student Town Hall meeting. As I just shared with them, we will be doing this two times every single school year, where in the fall and the spring, we actually hear from the student voices. A lot of times, as educators, we make a lot of decisions on behalf of students, and we don't take the time to stop and ask them what's their opinion, or to answer their questions about work that we're doing. So that's what today's all about. We're going to be taking a variety of questions from the audience. We also will be taking questions via Twitter. So I know we have several high schools that are watching us, several high school students watching us via their classrooms, and so if you want to send a question to me either through the Baltimore County Twitter feed, which is B-A-L-T-C-O-P-S, you can send us a question via that way, or you can send us a question via D-Dance underscore B-C-P-S. But we're going to answer as many as we can, and these are unscripted questions. I said that to our audience a while back. I have not seen any of the questions, other than I've seen maybe two, and they're actually around themes, curriculum and air conditioning, which I know is going to be another question folks are going to talk about anyway. So I do want to start off, while you all are thinking of your questions, around the question that I got today. And it was really around the course offerings, and how can we have more course offerings in high school? And what I've clearly shared with our high school principals is that the high school is really built around the master schedule. But the master schedule of any school does not need to be built around teacher requests. It needs to be built around student requests. And so every single year, high schools must build their school master schedules over, from scratch, based on what your students are looking for. And so we're going to be working in, we already have started working with high schools and middle schools already, to redesign the high school approach of how we do our master schedules. When we do this approach, it will result in more course offerings for students that actually are still in alignment with the course offerings that you need in order to graduate with a Maryland State diploma. So that's the first question, and now we'll open it up to all of you. And I know we have many aspiring journalists in the audience today, and many people who are reporting for their high school newspaper. So have at it. So who's the first question? James, and I think we're coming with the microphones. We can make sure we hear James' question.
Hello, my name is James Bullock from Perry Hall High.
Thank you, James.
And my first question for you is, what are your intentions for Baltimore County Public Schools as far as like improvements academic-wise and traditions that you would like to keep going and keep alive, et cetera?
Very good question, James. And one of the good things about Baltimore County Public Schools is that we are really known as a good school system. The question for us now is, how do we make a good school system a great school system? And so we do that by really building on the customs and traditions we've had, but also figuring out, what do we need to do in order to prepare our students for the next phase? And so when we came in, I literally looked at Blueprint for Progress and looked at what was successful during that plan. But I also said, if we're going to move forward as a school system, because I'm not interested in being a good school system. All of you are not interested in going to a good school system. You're interested in going to a great school system. And I'm pretty competitive, and folks will tell you that. So to move from a good school system to a great school system, we have to have a plan in place that gets us there. So around the community, we've been talking about Blueprint 2.0. And around the audience today, you see sort of what the four pillars of Blueprint 2.0 are. But it really evolves around the academic program, the safety and security of our students and our staff, making sure that we communicate with our public, because it's bigger than just us inside of Baltimore County Schools. It really is a conversation for the entire community. And then, we all know that with the economic realities being what they are, our budgets are getting tighter. So how do we make sure that we are organizing ourselves so that we get things done effectively and efficiently? So what I want people to know is that through Blueprint 2.0, it's not a Dallas Dance Plan. It can't be a superintendent plan. It needs to be one that's generated by the community, and that's why we've done a lot of community outreach for it. But through it, you're going to see a plan in place that really moves us from a good school system to a great school system.
That's awesome.
Thanks, James. Next question. Okay, Kyle. Or, well, then we'll come to Kyle.
Sorry. I'm Vaughn Parts from Towson High School, and I heard that there's been a lot of debate over whether the school board should be all appointed by the superintendent, all elected by voters, or hybrid. Which one do you think would serve the students the best?
Okay, and say your name again for me.
I'm Vaughn Parts.
Vaughn. What Vaughn's talking about is there's currently some conversation around how the school board should be selected for Baltimore County Public Schools. And to make sure everyone has accurate information, right now, the school board is actually appointed by the governor of the state of Maryland, which is right now Governor Martin O'Malley. And so the current process is, the governor will appoint the members, and the members will serve for a five-year term, and can be reappointed for another five-year term, but can't exceed 10 years. There is conversation, do we currently keep that appointed process? Do you go to an elected process, a hybrid process? My position has been very clear. Vaughn, I work for the students of Baltimore County Public Schools. I work for the students of Baltimore County Public Schools, and my goal is to work with the board to make sure there are systemic goals in place to move student achievement forward. So I really have no position for or against how our board is selected, because again, when I work for all of you, whatever board that's in place, we're going to work with them to establish the goals to move us to a great school system.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vaughn. Brandon, and then we'll come back to this side. And I didn't realize, there are two Brandon's. So we will get Brandon one, Brandon two, and then we'll come back to this side.
I'm Brandon Johnson from Parkville High School. And my question is, of 22 public high schools in Baltimore County, 10 are in your public student advisory board. So how do we get the other schools properly representation on your board?
Brandon, I think you have a very legitimate point. And one thing I've already started asking our staff to do is to look at, what's the current appointing process for members of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council? For those of you who don't know, the superintendent does have a student advisory council that I meet with about six to seven times a year. And they talk about various activities, and they actually plan various activities for the school system. I will tell you that going forward, next school year, there will be a representative sample from across the entire school system in terms of how those individuals are selected. This year, we did go back and add a member to make sure that the geographic regions were actually represented on the panel. But what I actually wanted was a more diverse group of students from across various high schools, which you'll see for the 13, 14 school year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. We can do Brandon two, and then we'll go to Kyle.
Hello, my name is Brandon Merritt. I am from Eastern Tech High School, and I have two questions for you today. How can student council promote a positive atmosphere within the school community?
Okay, the question is, how does a student council really promote the school community? And so one of the things you have to look at is actually having a working definition for student councils across Baltimore County of what leadership really is. Leadership can be exhibited as early as elementary schools. Some of you probably were running for something, or running for president or vice president of your elementary school. We need to have a definition of really what does that look like from elementary to middle to high. What I would hope for is that individuals who are serving on student council associations at any of our high schools, that they actually serve as the role models and the leaders in that building. So they're working hand-in-hand with the principal to make sure that the student voice is in fact heard. One of the things that you're going to see in Blueprint 2.0 is that through the communication pillar of that plan, student voice will be a primary aspect in that. And so by me doing events just like this, it lets principals know that I'm interested in hearing student voice, so that as they're planning initiatives in their building, the SCA is at the table as well.
And my second question is, do you in the future see that we can use smartphones for educational purposes in the classroom?
The answer to that would be, of course. The question, though, is it's making sure that we're not using them for the sake of just using them, but we're using them to really promote student learning in the classroom. And so I don't get concerned, because I know that that's going to happen. And smartphones are going to be a part of the educational environment. What I get concerned about is, how do we make sure there's an instructional technology vision for our school system? And that when that vision's been crafted, it's been crafted based on what teachers need to know and be able to do to adapt to that type of instructional change. Because as you know, right now, we have several teachers who, they basically say, all right, take out your smartphones, use your calculator on your smartphones. And there are some teachers who are extremely, extremely comfortable with that. But then we have some teachers who are not as comfortable with it. And so we have to figure out, how do we make sure that teachers are comfortable through training them? But then also, how do we make sure that we teach you all how to use your phones and technologies responsibly? So for the longest time in education, we put our heads in the sand. We've just basically said, we don't want students using them. And what's happening is, by us telling you not to do it, you've wanted to do it more. So the reality is, if we know this shift is coming, we have to figure out, how do we teach you to really understand what your digital footprint is all about? And so I try to remind some of you who follow me on Twitter, that whatever you put out there, individuals can see it and recall it later on. We do know that there are several situations where we look to hire individuals, and based on what they have done in their past with social media, we actually recuse them from actually getting a job. And so you never want to put yourself in a situation where you've done something, and you can't get a job because of something that you've done. Thanks, Brandon. I think we have a question come in from Twitter.
From Twitter. Our first Twitter question is from LJ. Her question is, how do you plan on adding more world languages into public schools?
Good question. LJ must have been in a meeting that we just recently had as a senior staff. And what I've said is that we have to make sure our students are able to compete when they leave here. You all will not be competing against, you know, students from Baltimore County. You won't be competing from students in Montgomery County, or even Maryland. You're going to be competing with kids from around the United States, around the country. So the best way to compete is to make sure that you are fluent in a language other than one. So other than English, we have to make sure we're providing that opportunity. For me, the best way to provide that opportunity, and this is to LJ and to some of you, some other of you who are probably thinking that same thing, is how do we make sure that world language is really immersed in our elementary schools? We know that if students are actually learning a language early on in elementary school, you have a better chance to retain it as you transition to middle and transition to high. So I believe that folks will see, while not playing all my cards yet, I think folks will see that when Blueprint 2.0 is rolled out, there's a strong emphasis on world language. But there's a strong emphasis on world language as early as our elementary grades. Okay.
Hello, my name is Nadia Nash. I go to Perry Hall High School.
Okay.
Have you made decisions on creating alternative school options for students with difficult home situations?
Right now, one of the things I did when I first got here was I met with about 25 kids who were viewed as sort of at-risk, disengaged. And these are many of our students who are in our current alternative ed centers. And so what I was really, really excited to know is that Baltimore County has done a really, really good job of looking at the alternative learners. But what I wanted us to do was expand our definition of alternative learners, because alternative learning is just not for those individuals who might fit into one box. So you can be an alternative learner, because you want to learn at your own pace. That the grade level classification might not work for you. You are a student who wants to accelerate, you want to get ahead. You want to be able to take another class, or you want to take something early on, online, because you want to free up your schedule. So what I've had our staff to do right now is look at every single aspect of our continuum with curriculum, and figure out, how can we provide more opportunities for kids to have access to that curriculum? Some of you might know now that we are a finalist for a District Race to the Top Grant Award. And this grant award is $30 million to $40 million that will allow us, if we get it, so we're keeping our fingers crossed, if we get it, this will allow us to expand our virtual curriculum for all of our students. So we will be able to put every single course that kids will need in order to graduate online, so that kids will be able to take it at their own pace, while at the same time being able to enrich their opportunities as they're here with us. But right now, I want to expand the definition beyond just a traditional alternative learner in that regard, and make sure it's really figuring out the students who have difficult home situations, but also those students who want to accelerate their instruction as well.
And how do you think you could change how education is provided to ensure students are learning to their full potential?
One of the things that I would love to do, and this is where I'm going to need you for your help in this one, and I know our educators were doing this too, is really getting students to understand the importance of taking ownership and responsibility for their own learning. And so that's why I always impress upon our students when I go out visiting schools, you have to have the plan in order to execute it. If you have no plan, nothing will get done. Every single year, schools write school improvement plans. Every single year, I have a goals conference with the Board of Education. Every single year, principals have their goals conference. We need to do the same thing for our students. We have to come to a system where every single school has their own, every single student has their own plan for what they're going to do over the course of that school year, to take responsibility for getting to the next step. We're talking about that now in terms of how do we just personalize learning for all of our students. But we have to personalize by really teaching you, and we have to do it. We have to teach you all how to take responsibility for your own learning, and take responsibility for your own life. So we own that, and so that's the parts that we're working on now as we draft our next strategic plan. Thank you. Okay. Kyle, I think I was calling you, you can go right around. I'm sorry.
Nice to see you again, Dr. Dance.
Thanks, Kyle.
My name is Kyle Rivers from Towson High School. Are there any plans or discussions in changing our school schedules, such as shorter breaks, or longer school days, or I guess, more days in school?
This is a national conversation, and Kyle's real question is learning time. And what's the appropriate learning time for students? And this has become a national conversation over the last probably five to eight years. And really looking at, how much time should kids go to school? How long should they go to school, and so forth? I have been no, I've not been quiet in this. I'm a big proponent of more time for kids. I really am. And I've been a bigger proponent of more time in school in terms of extending the year, extending the day. However, I do get concerned when we say extend the day, that we're just going to do the same as usual. So I don't want to extend the day, put 30 minutes on every, we're just extending every period by five, 10 minutes. That's not the best way to do it. But I put a lot of emphasis right now at the national level, and in our thinking with staff, in terms of what should just the school calendar look like? So if we were to say that students who need to get caught up, those students were to go to school year-round, what would that look like? What would a year-round calendar even look like? You know, as I talked to several teachers, some teachers actually support that. Some students support it, and I say that you can go to school for nine weeks. You go to school for nine weeks, you get three weeks off, nine weeks, three weeks off, and you still get a month off during the summer. What would that look like? I get concerned when, I need to make sure that kids are reading on grade level by the time they get to second grade. And at that point, you're learning to read, but when you get to third grade, you're reading to learn. So if you've not picked up on that early literacy, there is going to be a problem. So how do we make sure if students are not on grade level, we're not giving them more time off than somewhere where they're actually falling further and further behind? I think that's a conversation that we're going to continue having nationally. The whole question around it then is the cost that comes along with it. Because extending the calendar, extending the school day, there is a cost that comes along with that. And we have a $1.5 billion budget, which folks will say is a lot of money. And it is a lot of money, but at the same time, we educate 107,000 students. We have 174 school centers and programs, and we have over 17,000 employees. So when you start looking at those three factors, we don't have much money to play with. But I do think for those students who really, really need that additional time in school, we're going to have a conversation internally, as well as nationally, in terms of how do we actually expand that time for people?
Awesome. And where exactly, like, how far in the future do you see like a change with technology within our curriculum?
Very good question. We're having that internal conversation right now. Of course, all of you know that I'm a technology native. And so what I am looking to do right now is, how do we actually fast-track our curriculum in terms of putting it online? Again, hence the Race to the Top District Allied Application. But at the same time, you all probably know this, you're from various schools, there is a technology disparity across the school system. There is. There are some schools that are fully loaded with it, and there are some schools that barely have anything in them. So what I've basically said to our staff is, we have to do two things and do them now. So one, we have to make sure there's a technology infrastructure in place at every single school that will actually support it. So right now, there is a bid out for companies to submit proposals to put wireless in every single school that we have in Baltimore County. And what we're looking to do is to do this over a two-year period. So right now, some schools don't have wireless access. Some schools have it, but it's spotty. But we're going to make sure, how do we level the playing field putting wireless all over our schools, so that the same wireless that exists at Carver will exist at Patapsco and other schools as well, too? The second thing is that we have to create a technology standard that exists in every single classroom. So if you go into every classroom, or any classroom in Baltimore County, what are those three to four things that you need to be seeing that actually will advance teaching and learning through technology? We're going to decide what those three or four things are with our teachers and principals, which we've already started. And then my goal is to figure out how, over a two-to-three-year period, we make that happen. And then the other component that comes along with that is, again, how do we make sure teachers are trained to deal with this shift? Again, we have teachers on all ends of the spectrum. I have staff who report to be who are on all ends of the spectrum, who are really prepared to grapple with it. We have some who say, I don't really want to deal with it, because they're a little nervous. So how do we bring everyone along a continuum where they're being trained to deal with that instructional shift? Thank you. Thanks. Gabrielle. And then we'll come on this side.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle from Parkville High School. And I know that you mentioned earlier that you were going to try to base the curriculum off of what students would like to do. I know that some classes were being considered to be in cut, so how can you prevent that from happening when students really want to take them?
I think one of the things that I have to do on my level, and what we're talking about in Gabby's question is, how do you make sure that classes that students want to take are not the ones that are actually cut? And so it's really working me with principals on how do you actually create your master schedule? Because if your master schedule is created based on student course requests, if there are 20 students or more who are looking for a course, that course can't be cut, because you have a section that actually has to be offered for those students. So we actually, at the last principals' meeting, which was November, we actually started talking to them about building the master schedule based on student course requests. Also, what we're doing right now is, we're taking a deep look into every single course that we offer in Baltimore County. So right now, our course guide has over 1,400 courses in it, which no one wants that many courses, of course, in our course guide. But it does say to us that we actually offer a wide variety of courses for students. But we have to make sure that, one, they're the right courses, and they're the right courses that kids want to take, and that meet the requirements for a Maryland State diploma as well, too. So we've had those conversations around the course guide, and principals just building their master schedule based on student course requests, as opposed to what principals and their teachers want.
Okay. Thank you.
Question on this side.
My name is Patrick from Patapsco High School. And my question is, how do you feel about the JRTC program becoming a completer class?
Say it one more time, I didn't.
How do you feel about the JRTC program becoming a completer class?
I think it's one of the things that we need to look at. We have a lot of conversations now around service learning opportunities for kids in general, the extracurriculars that we provide our students. I'm a big, big proponent of the armed services. And so I think there is a conversations that we need to have with our director and coordinator of career and technical education programs, because we have a really, really good relationship right now as a school system with the four armed service branches. And so anytime that we can actually promote to our students the activity of service beyond graduation, it's something that I will support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. We'll take one in the middle, and then what we'll do is, we'll literally go right around. So we'll take one in the middle, right around, then we'll come back.
Hello, my name is Mariah Stewart from Lockraven High School.
Mariah, how are you?
And I was just, I was wondering about funding for like journalism and literary magazines, because it seems like we're starting to print less and less issues. Like, what are your ideas on trying to fix that?
I think it's a conversation that we're having, not just inside as a school system, but really nationally, they're having, we're having conversations, because there have been a lot of publications, media publications that used to print, that they're printing less and less, because they're going now to more online delivery. So because we know that's a national trend that's happening, we need to make sure we're able to adapt to the time as well, too. At the same time, though, we actually have to make sure we're supporting those opportunities for our students to communicate. So I was at a school recently for Senior Interview Day, and I had a phenomenal time at the school. But one thing I said was that we cannot do this just one time. And so how do we make sure that through elementary, middle, and high, we're giving our students opportunities to communicate, not just in written form, but also verbal form? As a former member of, when I was in high school, my school's newspaper staff and yearbook staff, I'm a big, big proponent of students being able to hone their journalistic artistic talent. And so anything that I would do to actually expand those extracurricular activities, but also those elective options for students, through journalism, through yearbook, through creative writing, and in fact, I will do that. Thank you.
We have a tweet that just came in from Collette Simkins. She says, how do you plan to balance equity across the county when some schools are regular and others have magnet programs?
Okay, very good point. And when I transitioned here, and I kept hearing all of the questions around inequities. And when they advertised for the job, they did this superintendent profile. And so they were asking the community, what do you want to see in the superintendent? And they asked the community, they asked their teachers. And of course, everyone wanted Superman. But one thing they basically said is that they want someone who can address infrastructure, academics, and equity. So I kept asking folks, what does equity really mean? Because, you know, all of us may have a different definition for it. And I kept getting equity in academic programs, equity in technology, across all schools. One thing that I'm very big on is, with the school system our size, we are the 26 largest school system in the country. We have to make sure there is a standard that's in place that we set at the school, at the school system level. And then if schools want to build on that, we give them the autonomy to do that, but we set the standard at the district level. So that's where you see the technology standard that I've talked about coming in. That's where you see the academic standard is coming in. Because I've been very, very clear in saying that if we're going to offer a curriculum, we're not going to offer a curriculum that's tailored to, you know, this level of student or this level of student. We're going to offer a curriculum that's tailored to pushing students to higher levels, regardless of your ability level. We're pushing all of our students up, and we're closing achievement gaps, but we're raising the bar at the same time. So that's setting the standard right then. Then also the same thing as I just talked about with technology. Now, as I can see going into the 2013, 2014 school year, we're going to have to do a thorough review of our entire programmatic options that we provide kids. And this is, these are just not our magnet program options, but it's other programs that we offer our students as well, to make sure that equity and access is available all throughout the county. So what I've tasked our staff to do right now is, if you look at Baltimore County, of course, Baltimore County is like a big horseshoe around Baltimore City. What I want to do is be able to pinpoint all of our magnet options, and make sure there's a magnet option, and it's equity and accessible to students, regardless of where you're living in the school system. And then making sure that we're not, you know, having barriers in place where you can't get there. So my prime example would always be fine arts. There's a wonderful fine arts program at Carver. There's a wonderful fine arts program at Patapsco. But what are we doing in the western part of the county to make sure those students, if you want fine arts, you can't get into Carver, or you're not able to get into Carver, you're not able to get into Patapsco, there's a fine arts option for you on that side of the county, too? So that's just an example to make sure that we've leveled the playing field in terms of programmatic options across the county. And we'll come right around.
I'm Ron, I'm Ronald from Crossroads Center. And I want to know if, do you feel that alternative schools are effective?
I do. I've been, of course, my previous work before coming in Baltimore County was in Houston. And I'm a big, big fan of alternative programs. However, I've been very clear in saying, alternative, the definition for alternative ed needs to be expanded, because folks think that alternative ed is really at-risk students, students who are disengaged, and it's not. Again, it's students who are able to matriculate through the school system at their own pace or at their own time. So we have to expand our definition for alternative learning. And what I've asked our staff to do is look at currently what we're offering, which I've had an opportunity to visit many of our alternative programs. But then also, where are the gaps? So when we have students who are not being serviced by those alternative programs, what do we do? How do we get them back on track? One of the biggest things that I think we can do in terms of alternative options is, most of us can remember middle school and the time that, what was going on in your life when you were in middle school. We have many students in our school system that, because of the transition or lack thereof that exists in middle schools, they start getting off track then. And if you start getting off track in middle school, what can we do through another type of learning environment to catch you up and get you back on track? So that's another type of alternative learning environment that we're looking at right now. But there's so much that can be done when you actually expand your definition of alternative ed, as opposed to narrowing it in a small box. Thanks, Ronald.
Hello, I'm Hope Henson from Lockraven, and I would like to know what's being done to make school lunches more nutritious for students.
The infamous school lunch question. So right now USDA has already issued guidelines in terms of what we are able to offer in terms of students and school nutrition. So you probably have noticed over the last couple of years anyway, your lunches have begun to change, your breakfasts have, breakfast programs have begun to change. And that's because there are new guidelines that are in place right now at the federal level to drive that. One of the initiatives from the first lady has been in order to, you know, to expand those options for us. So clearly, we're in compliance with federal guidelines in terms of school nutrition services as well. But one of the things that I've been very big on is how do we expand our breakfast options for some of our students as well? So we have breakfast in the classroom, we have Grab and Go, Grab and Go that actually is available at many of our schools now. And we've expanded that because what we know, and basically what researchers told us, is that when students actually have breakfast in the morning, they perform better. And for many of us who are competitive, who are athletes, and who take part in physical fitness, you understand that breakfast is the most important meal of the day. And so we've actually looked at now, how do we expand those breakfast options to students? And we're looking to do the same thing for next year. But we are looking at, what are the guidelines that the federal government has said to us? And then how do we need to tweak those as well to provide more healthy options as well for students? Thank you, Hope.
Hi, my name is Jada, I'm from Overly. I wanted to ask you, when will you expand the Avid program, like outside of Avid, to every classroom?
Okay, so right now, we've done a lot of, lot of work with Avid, with Baltimore County Public Schools. And Advanced via Individual Determination has been around, that's what Avid stands for, been around for a number, a number of years. And Dr. Harrison did a really, really good job of expanding that under his tenure. What we're saying right now is, what are those components of Avid that we know are most successful? So making sure that tutoring exists in our classrooms, that individuals have college plans already in our classrooms, and what are those components that we think are most critical? And then how can we expand those to other classrooms across the county? Because the reality is, if we're looking to expand Avid across the county, that's going to be a big budgetary item that's going to be, that could be used for something else. However, the components of Avid, where you're actually being tutored, you have a mentor, you're being coached, you have a plan, those are things that we can build into our curriculum now, that we can do internally, that we don't have to go out and say, "We're buying this because we have to do it, and we rely on our program." I will tell you that next year, we are having conversations in terms of expanding our tutoring options to several other middle and high schools. Because if students are behind when they get to Miller High School, how do we catch them up quicker, so that they're not running at the same pace every single year? So tutoring is one thing we're definitely looking at. And we've had a lot of talk now around just, how do students actually craft a plan, and what does that career and college plan look like? So we're having those conversations internally, as opposed to saying, "We're just going to expand Avid." But at the same time, we've not said that we're cutting Avid, and I have not made any decisions, nor have I said that I'm looking to cut Avid, because I'm not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back in the middle, we're going to come straight around, and I'll get you in when we come back around. Matt.
Thank you, Dr. Dance. My name is Matthew Monk, I'm from Eastern Tech. And I was curious, we're trying to start some, our student council, some new environmental initiatives. And what would be the probability, or the possibility, rather, of creating a partnership where the cans and the paper that each school recycles can be a system-wide program where the money we get from that can be used to pay for, you know, things like scholarships or other things that we need in the schools?
I would love for you, Matt, working with SCA and working with Dr. Evans, put together a proposal of what that would potentially look like. It's a conversation that I've had with our facilities, folks, because even if you come into my office, I've started to recycle paper in my office. So if it's starting with me, we're starting to figure out in Greenwood, how do we recycle more, which is our central administration building, which would then trickle to our other administrative offices and then down to our schools. What I would love to see, though, Matt, is a proposal that SCA has basically composed, along with the support of Dr. Evans. And let's figure out what we need to do to expand it potentially for the school system.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Matt. We'll do this, and then we'll get the Twitter question.
Hello, my name is Tiana from Patapsco High School and Center for the Arts. As a performance theater magnet student at Patapsco High School and Center for the Arts, I understand that transportation is limited to only eastern and central areas in Baltimore County. We are the only school with an instrumental music magnet program. Being this, students in western areas of Baltimore County must provide their own transportation, which can be difficult. So in most cases, some students have to eliminate a choice. This same problem is presented in other magnet schools in the eastern and western areas. How can this issue be resolved if not minimized?
I think you bring up a good point, Tiana. And we are right now doing magnet forums across the entire county. And we're hearing from a lot of folks around, again, just equity and access to our magnet options. And so what I would love to be able to do is to take that feedback that we're getting from the forum, and I will tell you, that's been one question that they've raised, and one concern that I have personally. But then how do we take that, and then how do we roll that into a strategic review in terms of every single program that we offer? So again, not looking at it as just Patapsco, but how do you make sure that across the board, you take a thorough look at all of our magnet options? Ultimately, what you would want, and this is, this is my perfect world, is that if you're admitted into any magnet program in the school system, that we provide transportation for you, regardless, if you're admitted into the magnet program. At the same time, because our county and school system is so large, we have to make sure that there are magnet options that are, that kids want all across the county. So if there is a fine arts, if you're living in the western part of the county and you want to do fine arts, there needs to be a fine arts program there in the western part of the county for you, that really is at the same level as Carver or Patapsco, so that we're not transporting you all the way to the eastern part of the county, but there's one right there in your backyard. But again, what I'm looking at is that it's a little bit bigger than one particular school, but then what are those barriers that we have in place that we can control, that actually limit access and opportunity for kids to get into those types of programs?
Okay. And I have one more question, another dreaded lunch question. As a vegetarian at, as a vegetarian student in Baltimore County, I can speak for most of that vegetarian options at school are very limited. As we students become older, we develop thoughts that allow us to change our eating options and have alternative eating habits. Due to the growth in vegan and vegetarianism in schools, how can lunches be improved to help us gain the nutritional value we need to guide us through the rest of our school day?
Okay, I think it's one of the things that we need to look a little more seriously at. We've not, it's just not Baltimore County, it's across the country. We've not taken those look, internal looks in terms of what other options we provide kids. But I think that right now, as we comply with USDA guidelines, as we look at feedback from individuals, we're doing cost estimates right now to figure out, what is it going to cost in order to do that as well, too? So I think it's one of the things that we need to look at in the future, just as when you get into high school, you're becoming more mature. You're able to make a lot more decisions for yourself, as opposed to individuals around you, your family, your friends. We need to make sure we're adapting to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
This tweet is from Chesapeake High School. What are your future plans to better our schools for higher grade, I mean, graduation levels, excuse me?
Say that question one more time.
What are your future plans to better our schools for higher graduation levels?
For me, I view, and I take that question, is how are you going to increase the graduation rate for Baltimore County? So for me, I look at it in terms of two stages. One, there is a stage where we have individuals right now in high school who have fallen off track. They have not done well their ninth grade year, and they're now trying to get back on track as they go into their 10th or 11th grade year. And so for me, I call that triage. What do we need to do right now to get kids caught up? And so we have expanded our credit recovery options for kids. Right here at Chesapeake, we've done it. And our credit recovery option in Baltimore County is a system called Advance Path. And so we've expanded it now to, it's at Dundalk, it's at Chesapeake, it's at Woodlawn, we have it at a couple other schools as well, too. And we're figuring out next year, how do we expand it to Lansdowne? Well, that's triage. You don't want to expand, you know, Advance Path or Credit Recovery across your schools. What you want to do is that, at the same time, while you're doing that type of approach, you're also taking a really, really good approach, that's two things. One, elementary literacy. How do you make sure that kids really, really, really are reading on grade level in the second grade? And that if they're not reading on the, on grade level in the second grade, you're doing something different, and that we have something in place that will get you reading on grade level. The second thing is middle school. And, you know, we talk about middle school in general nationally now, but I've always said, kids mentally, they drop out in middle school. They physically do it in high school, because at that point, they feel they're more mature, they're grown. So what do we need to do strategically at middle school to change how we transition students into middle school, and that we're dealing with the social, emotional components that come along with middle school, but we're not lowering our academic expectation for students as well, too? The last thing that we're doing right now, and I just had these data pulled for me, is the number of students across our county who, at the end of the first quarter, at ninth grade, they failed one or more classes. And so we already know, if you failed a course at the end of, at the end of the first quarter, and it's a ninth grader, if you fail that course, it's going to be tough for you to get caught up. So if we wait till the end of the year, it's going to be tough to do anything. But if we intervene with you right now, we can change it so that as we go toward the end of the first semester, third and fourth quarters, we're changing that. And the last thing I will say is that I've been a big, big advocate for, how do we make sure that kids can go into high school with at least one credit already underneath their belt? So it can be an elective option, it could be a summer approach that we take for students. But if you go into high school and you already have one credit below, underneath your belt, your chances of graduating have increased over 50%. And that's because you already start to see the end in mind, because you already have one of the required credits already underneath your belt. So let me get over here, and then we'll come around.
Hello, my name is Zahara Casby from Parkville High School. And my question is in regards to seniors, because many students don't know about the college process, and many will choose not to, once they graduate, choose to go to college because they were not aware of the process. So how do you plan on involving the college process into high school, other than Avid and the counseling office helping? How can we teach students more about the process, so by the time that they're seniors, they know what to do, oh, in regards to colleges?
I think there's a couple of ways, and very good question. A couple of ways you approach it. One, I'm big on early intervening. So how do we get our students in middle school to start thinking about college? So how many times can we in middle school take you over to our college campus, so you can see just what you can expect, you know, five, six years down the line, because you're a middle school student at that point? The second thing is, we have to make sure counselors have the most accurate updating, up-to-date information. And so we have in our central office, a coordinator of school counseling. And Mr. Hayden works with all of the counselors in all of our, all of our schools K-12. And what I've said is that we need to make sure that in our monthly meetings with the high school counselors and middle school counselors, we're talking about college opportunities for students. And not just college opportunities, but actually scholarship opportunities for kids, too. In addition, how do we actually create a college database, any scholarship database for our students? So your counselor's giving you this information, but we've created this portal so that you actually have access to this information as well, too. The last thing that we need to do is, how do we take these college visits that we have, and actually bring, take you to college, but also bring colleges to us? So we've had this large conversation around, if we were to do this college roundtable, if we were to bring all of these colleges, you know, 50, 60 colleges to Baltimore County over a two-to-three-day period, what would that look like? And how could we advertise that? How could we make sure there's a venue for it? But then it gives you the opportunity, and let's not talk with one college representative, but if you're a ninth grader, 10th grader, even an eighth grader, or a senior, and you want to talk to college representatives, you have 60 to 80 of them in one room for you to actually get information. So right now, for me, it's just, how do you get the information out there? But I think it does need to start with our school counselors, making sure that monthly, they're kept up to date. But then we actually have some type of online system where kids and their parents can get access to it for colleges and scholarships.
And thank you. And my other question was that you mentioned in the, in your new blueprint 2.0, that you have a part that's only for safety. So how do you exactly plan on enhancing the safety of students while they're at school?
I think we've expanded this conversation throughout the course of the school year. When I came on board, I had an entry plan. The entry plan literally had said to examine the safety operations of our school system, and to expand the Office of Safety and Security. Of course, when we had two very tragic incidents the first three weeks of school, I accelerated that process. I think Mr. Ronzam has done a really, really good job of reaching out to schools to figure out, what does each individual school have in place now to address student needs? And I think we have a really, really good plan for being reactive. What I've tried to do is change the conversation to be proactive. And so when you're proactive, you actually have environments that are built where kids feel like they're connected to the school. So that's why you always hear me talk about, do our kids really feel like someone at the school knows them, understands them, but they can go to that person if they're sensing or having a problem with anything? And so we have some schools that really, that do it extremely, extremely well. We have some schools that are starting to build those systems now. I know at the high school level, where you have a lot of students, it becomes increasingly harder. But that's where we need to keep our hands on the pulse a little bit deeper, anyway. But also, how do we create these environments where students can share information with us without a feeling like my, I can't remain anonymous at the same time? There are so many incidents that happen every single day, or that are supposed to happen every single day, that we actually intervene because someone has shared the information with us. And so the Baltimore County community has shared information with us, students share information with us. You know, we pull, whether it's weapons or something off of a student, or we actually intervene in information every single day, because a student has overheard something, or their friend has told them something, and they share it with us. So those are the types of environments I want to make sure they're existing in all 174 buildings that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, then we'll come right to you, and we'll walk right around.
You said something a few times about trying to get kids at a, leaving, or reading at grade level by second grade. What are you going to do with the kids that have dyslexia or other learning disabilities to try and help them? Because I recently just started learning at, or reading at grade level because I have dyslexia.
One of the things that we have to do is to make sure that we're strategically training our staff around students' IEPs, or Students Individualized Education Plans. And these cannot be cookie-cutter plans at all. As a former collab teacher, where I was an inclusion teacher, I actually taught with a teacher who was a special education teacher, I know the importance of making sure the plan actually mirrors what the student individually needs. And so we need to make sure that we're meeting the student at his or her level, and that we're filling in those gaps where those individuals are. Because I'm a firm, firm advocate that regardless of an individual's disability level, you can still get them up with the high expectations and with the individual approach that students need as well, too. When I came on board, I had a lot of questions around special education as a school system. One thing that I said was that, this is not something that I can solve right now myself, I need to make sure I have some additional information. So right now, we actually have a special education audit that we have going on, in terms of how much we spend on special ed, the organizational structure of special ed, but also, how do we deliver special education services for students who are across the entire spectrum, dyslexia, autism? And how do we provide those services and that attention to those students? We're expecting to have the first-round deliverables in January from that report, which will inform much of the work that we do going into next school year. And we're also talking about the summer. How do we approach summer school differently for some of our learners, to make sure that, again, when we know they're going to actually slide in the summer, we're providing those summer school options to keep them on pace and to catch them up a little quicker?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
How are you?
My name is Marlene Garcia, and I'm from Overly High School. My first question is, what are your plans for students who already have a second language? I'm Hispanic, and I already, like, I'm fluent in everything, and my classmates say it's unfair that I take Spanish because I'm Hispanic. So what are your plans for students who already have a second language?
What I would actually say is that, I would look at that two ways. One, Marlene, is that if we have students, we have several students who are fluent in two languages, there's nothing wrong with getting fluent in a third. The other thing, too, though, and I had this when I went to Houston, is that even though some people, or some students might be fluent in two languages, there's nothing wrong with expanding your options to AP and to Spanish 5, because then you start learning the language at a different rate. And you start learning at a different level as well, too. So a lot of folks think that when you're bilingual, you don't need to learn another language, but you really can learn another language, which also can go deeper with that second language as well, too. And which is really something that I pushed when I was in Houston.
And my other question is, what are your future plans for renovations for Overly? Because it's not very accessible with going down to the fields, and the elevator's very old, and the school building is extremely old.
I'm going to take it a little bit higher level than Overly. But I have been the Overly, and as a matter of fact, I was in front of the interagency council, which is the council that actually works with us as we're developing our capital budget. And Overly was a topic that came up yesterday, along with Pikesville. One thing that I want to do is to make sure that we get the message around infrastructure out to our community. Right now, and I know I'm probably going to answer a couple of questions with this, too, we have 61 schools that don't have air. And we're hoping, we have a pretty ambitious capital project, or a capital budget for the next two years, that we're hoping to get that number from 61 to 46, with local and state support. But I like to tell people, it's bigger than air, and it really is. Baltimore County has one of the oldest infrastructures in the state. We have an aging population, and we have aging buildings. So in the early 60s, we went on a massive building spree because our enrollment was increasing. So we built 119 schools over about a 10-year period. Well, the reality is, when you build that many schools, it's really good at that time. However, it's going to come to a point where they all are faced with the same situation. So right now, over 80% of the buildings in Baltimore County are over 40 years old. And we had a process in place to fix it with a report called Perks Router. Well, we were on track, we were really on track to doing great things with our schools, and then the economic reality hit. And so we had to put the brakes on that. So at the same time now, I have to get folks to realize that what we're dealing with right now is about a $1.7 billion issue. And it's an issue around air conditioning, it's an issue around modernizing our school facilities, because we have science labs that need to be updated, we have classrooms that need to be updated. But then we also have the whole technology infrastructure that we have to work around as well. And then we also have some schools that we need to make sure that are ADA compliant, and making sure that it's accessible to every single student who goes there, or who even needs access to it. And it's not even just student, but it's anyone who needs to have access to that building. So my message really is, how do I communicate that piece out? And I cannot communicate it out to just folks who work in Baltimore County, because that's only 17,000 people. And the reality is, all of the folks who work in Baltimore County don't live in Baltimore County. The reality for me, though, is that over 70% of the people who live in our community[1589.63] don't have school-aged kids. And over 55% of them don't have school-aged kids or grandkids. So I have to take the message much, much broader, because in order to solve it, in a $1.7 billion problem, folks have got to understand the correlation between property values and education. So that's the message I have right now. Because the standard that I want us as a community to adopt is that, what's the standard of facilities that we will want our own kids in? And then to benchmark that standard with what we provide to the 107,000 kids who depend on us. But I was literally yesterday talking about Pikesville, talking about Overly, because we have several schools that are on our capital project plan, that we're hoping to move forward with state and local support. I think we have one coming in, then we'll go in the middle.
Yes. This question is from Taylor Hannan. There are students who can't afford college. What plans are there for improving options for those students?
One of the big things about my job that I really love, and I was doing this yesterday, was just advocacy at the federal and the state level. So again, as we make a lot of decisions based on all of you all, we have to take an opportunity to hear your voice. As the Secretary of Education is making a lot of decisions for our nation schools, and he's just not looking at K-12, but also the higher ed system as well, too, he's interested in hearing from us, in terms of what are some of the things that we're looking for. So one thing I have been really, really pushing is on college affordability. Now, as a school system, we have to make sure that folks understand the options that you currently have out there to you. So I look at this as two ways. One, what are those scholarship options? So getting back to, how do we create a repertoire or a portal where you can actually look at your college options? And you can look at your college options and your scholarship options that are out there, because there are a lot, a lot of dollars out there for college. There really are. The other thing, too, is, how do we make sure that you guys understand the financial aid process when you're going to college? And so, working with school councils, we've already put a plan in place in terms of, how do we roll out a school-wide FASFA Day, where everyone understands the importance of filling out the FASFA form, which is the financial aid form, but then understanding that the decisions you make, in terms of what college you go to, what your major is, they will have an impact on you later down the road, once you graduate from college. So you're going into college with a plan, you're going into college in terms of looking at what's going to be the outcome of the degree, what's going to be the financial impact of obtaining that degree, and then making sure you can balance that as you graduate from college. So I'm approaching it from scholarships, from working with our Secretary of Education around that initiative, too, but also making sure that the financial aid form, that we actually have a district-wide and a system-wide push for that. In the middle, we'll work all the way around.
Hello, I'm Adelpheus Cole, and I go to Parkville High. So during school, I've noticed that lots of kids don't, like, they're not motivated, and I feel like a lot more would get done if everyone, if we could get everyone motivated. So I just wanted to know, like, what do you plan on doing to, like, motivate more students?
That's not a magic wand approach, it's not. The way I do believe it, though, and I have to answer that question based on my days as a teacher, is how do we make sure that our curriculum and our lessons are engaging for kids? So how do we make sure that we're just not teaching you for the sake of just teaching you, but we're actually, you know, giving you information that's relevant to what you need? So again, another part of my job is advocacy at the state level. So how do we make sure that the courses that we offer our students are relevant, but that not only are they relevant, how do we make sure that we're teaching them in a way that really matters? So, you know, I talk to history teachers all the time who tell me, you know, kids just don't, they don't want to know this. Well, how are we presenting that information so they want to know it? So I always take it back to, what's the curriculum that we're providing to kids, and then how are we actually providing that curriculum to kids? The other part, too, and it goes back to what I talked about at the very beginning, is how do we get students to just take ownership in their own learning? And you take ownership when there's a plan in place. When we actually sit down and talk with you about, what do you hope to see five years down the line for your life? You know, you're not going to be in Baltimore County public schools forever. Many of you don't want to be in Baltimore County public schools forever. But at the same time, once you leave us, what's next? What's next for you when you're not living with mom or dad? When you're taking care of yourself, when you're supporting yourself, when you have families of your own, you have children of your own? What's next for you then? And so if we can get you thinking about that aspect, then it gets you motivated, because you have to have a plan in place in order to get that. I think my relationship and my connection with students lends me as a primary driver to making sure that folks actually have a plan in place for their own learning, and then I can work with principals in order to make sure there's a framework built for every single school.
Thank you. One more quick question. I know this is a hot topic nationally, or, yeah, so, school bullying, what do you plan on doing about that?
One of the things that I think we need to do, just, is make sure folks understand what bullying really is. And I had probably a 45-minute discussion with members of my student advisory last month around what is bullying. And I think a lot of times that us as people, we don't view bullying what it really is. And we think that just because they're our friend, if we do something, it's cool, and it's not. So, I mean, I had one student who says, well, I called her a derogatory name, and that's just how we greet each other. That's bullying. So for us, it's a message of awareness. And then, another part that we have to do is, we have to flip the script a little bit and put ourselves in the situation where we ask folks, what if that were you? And so if that were you, how would you want to be treated? How would you want to be addressed if that were you? And then the last thing is, how do we make sure that folks take ownership of their schools? So through SEAs on school campuses, how do you make sure that there is an SCA campaign where you all, as students, come up with a solution of how can you address bullying on your campus? So I remember when I was a principal, one thing I posed to the students was, how do we create a campaign where if you're the bully, or if you see it, you're responsible? Or if it's happening to you, you're responsible? So regardless of the fact, all three facets of it, you have a responsibility of reporting it. And you're not reporting it so someone gets in trouble. You're reporting it so that you're actually bringing to their attention that what they're doing is wrong. Part of the things that we have to do for you as teachers and administrators of you is really to really work with you on getting you to make good decisions, to make sure that you understand why a decision is a good one versus a bad one. And that's through teaching. But one is awareness, and just making sure that we get you all to realize that whether you're the bully, whether you see it, or whether you're being bullied, you have a responsibility to report it, so that we can address it.
All right. Thank you.
Let's get one more on this side, and then we'll come back around, and then I think they're giving me the cue. In the back?
I'm Willie Jackson, and I go to Overly High School, and I wanted to know why you changed the sports and eligibility rule, and why it was enforced so quick?
Okay. Why did I change the sports and eligibility rule? One thing I have to probably say is, I doubt the superintendent changed that. But I will look into it and get back to you, because I do know the state of Maryland does have guidelines, too, that we must follow as a school system. But one thing that I'm very, very big on is that for any of our athletes who are in the room or who are watching, or who are in our high schools, you are a student first. And so you cannot be an athlete on the field if you've not done what you need to do in the classroom. And so that hints at the term scholar-athlete. And so if we're not setting the benchmark high for you in the classroom, we can't lower the benchmark, so you can actually play it well on the field. But the other thing, too, is, how do we make sure that we've created an environment where you're just not engaging yourself during the football, basketball, or baseball season, that you're engaging yourself all year long? That actually can be incorporated back into the plan. What I promise to do is, I will follow up through Twitter on that, because if I'm not mistaken, it is a state compliance that we had to follow. But regardless of whether it's state compliance rule or not, I'm very big on handling your business in the classroom first, before handling your business on the field. Let's do Rob, and then we'll come on the side.
Hi, I'm Rob from Sparis Point. Another thing from him saying the sports and other organizations, these kids, like, I'm, like, a three, I play three sports, and I'm all these organizations. What do you do to help kids that don't have the extra time to, like, what do you do to help them get into colleges, like, with the program also? I feel it's necessary that every kid should be able to go through that and get the college experience, because they don't have the parents or the support at home to do it.
One is making sure, again, our councils have the information, they're pushing you all. So from the moment you transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, your counselor should be working with you and owning your plan along with you. So if your plan is to get to X at the end of four years, your counselor has to own that plan along with you, and be held accountable to make sure that he or she is actually putting plans in place and strategies in place for you to help you achieve that. The second thing, too, is that we have to make sure we're creating a balance for students, too. So we have the full spectrum. We have some students who are taking six, seven AP classes, and we have some students who are taking one AP class. But there is a balance that you have to strike as well, too. So how do we create an environment where our academic expectations are high for you, but we also create those social and emotional components for you, too, so that you're not getting burnt out in the process? And the last thing, too, is that how do we just begin with the end in mind? I'm a big, big advocate for middle schools, and making sure that if we're talking college to students, if we're talking balancing your life to students, we address it in middle school, so that as you transition to high school, and as those expectations get higher, that you've already had the foundation built, because we've given you those supports through the middle school experience. Thanks, Rob.